Order. Good evening. Tonight is Monday, November 24th, 2014. Our start time is seven o'clock. Let's start off with roll call. It looks like all the members are present. And we're going to ask you to stand, please, and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all for coming out on a cold, blustery, late November evening. Looking for a approval of the agenda.
Some of second.
All right. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, recognition of the students, staff, and public. Tonight, we have a Human Rights Day proclamation. I'd like to ask Dennis Kane, who is the Chair of the Bloomington Human Rights Commission, along with the Youth Commissioner, Daniella Conkle. Did I get that right, Daniella? To come on up to the podium here, and if you'll bear with me, I have a rather long proclamation. Yes, we need the resolution read. And Nellie's going to do that?
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation recognizing December 10th, 2014 as Human Rights Day in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, and now I'll read this. So, I'll try and do it justice. And I have my glasses. There's a really neat font on here, but it's a little smaller than what I'm used to. Whereas, the Bloomington Public Schools join our nation in recognizing December 10th, 2014, as International Human Rights Day. And whereas Bloomington recognizes the importance of acknowledging the diversity that exists in our community as we strive for autonomous participation in our community affairs. And whereas, the devastating impact of prejudice can be eliminated through the efforts of our schools and city in promoting human rights awareness. And whereas, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights asserts all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. And whereas, the designation of a special Human Rights Day serves to remind us that basic human rights must be made available to all people. Therefore, be it resolved, the Bloomington Board of Education, Independent School District 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, does hereby proclaim December 10th, 2014, as Human Rights Day. And ask that all residents, and ask all residents to continue their efforts in making Bloomington a model for fair and equal rights for all persons.
Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Fujitaki, Cabinet members, individuals in the room as audience, and those watching at home. With me this evening is Daniella Conkle, and she is newly appointed, as you mentioned earlier, as Youth Commissioner for the Human Rights Commission. Daniella will be talking in just a minute about the Human Rights Recognition and the Declaration and the Proclamation that you are reading. And as she finishes, I will start talking briefly about the Omar Bondurud Celebration that is scheduled for December 1st. So Daniella.
Human Rights Day is a time for people to reflect about the meaning, importance, and the need for human rights. In 1948, December 10th was the date chosen to honor the United Nations General Assembly's adoption and proclamation of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights arose directly from the experience of the Second World War and represents the first global expression of rights to which all human beings are inherently entitled. The Bloomington Human Rights Commission annually observes December 10th as the anniversary of this presentation and invites its residents to continue to work toward making Bloomington a model for fair and equal rights to all beings.
Thank you, Daniella. The, with reference to the Omar Bondurud Ceremony, which is going to be held in the City Council Chambers on December 1st, there's a reception scheduled for 6:00 to 7:00. The program begins at 7:00. I think many of you know about Omar Bondurud. He was a Commissioner, a Human Rights Commissioner of some time ago. And we have fashioned an award that we give to individuals and to organizations to honor their work in the area of human rights. This year, we have two recipients. One is Frank White, who has been instrumental in helping the Human Rights Commission with two activities. One is the rededication of the Dred Scott Playing Field, and I'm sure you remember that. That was a very successful outreach and necessary to update that information because of the community. Some community members may have been unaware of who Dred Scott was. So, we refreshed that, and I think that was a good thing to do. Frank was instrumental in that activity. Secondly, he also was instrumental in developing a program called, what was termed then, the Negro League in Baseball. And those players played in Minnesota, in the Midwest area. Many of those were players from Minnesota. And all of that foundation, by the way, the program exhibit was called, "For the Love of the Game." These individuals played for the love of the game. And they established a tradition of the love of baseball, which carries forward today with our beloved Minnesota Twins. The other recipient is Cornerstone, and you know a lot about Cornerstone because we hear so much about them. One thing that we might want to focus on and should focus on with respect to this award is that they are offering services to support the victims of sexual trafficking. And that is a very powerful movement on their part, and we want to recognize those activities as well. So, we are looking forward to this celebration. We expect it to be very successful and well-attended, and we'd love to have you there.
All right, thank you. Don't go away. I have this proclamation to give you. All right, we want to make sure that we vote on this to make it official. All those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, Dennis and Danielle. Appreciate all the work that you guys do. And Danielle, good luck with your new position. All right, I think I know the answer to the next question, but I'll ask it anyway since the high school is on Thanksgiving break. There aren't any students here for their government class, but normally I would ask if they were and if they were to have them come up and say hello to their teacher and the class that they're here for. But, they're not here. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Part A. We're looking for a motion to approve the Part A agenda as is.
Some moved, second.
Moved and seconded. Any conversation? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, for those of you at home, the back of our agenda is what we're going to now. This is Part B. First thing up is a resolution stating the intention of the School Board to issue general obligation school building refund bonds, Series 214A, to refund general obligation school building bonds, 2006A.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 271, State of Minnesota, as follows. The School Board has determined that it is necessary and expedient to issue general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2014A, to refund certain maturities of the district's $45,470,000 general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2006A. The sale of bonds will be conducted in accordance with the bond sale guidelines attached.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. And in front of us, we have Rod Zifkovich and Gary Olson to help us understand this. What can you share with us?
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members. We're here tonight to talk about two resolutions regarding bonds. Gary Olson is with me. He is the Vice President from Ellers and Associates. Ellers is our financial management in selling of bonds. Their expertise is in debt planning and issuance, dealing with operating referendums, capital levies, and then also lease levy and lease levy approvals. So, I'm going to, most of the conversation tonight will be from Gary. And Gary can give you a background on both of these issuance tonight, and then we will take any questions that the board might have.
Good evenings. Pleasure to be here. The first issue is a refunding of your, as said, of your 2006 bonds. We're actually a refunding of an earlier bond issue that was part of the election that occurred back in 1999. Those bonds were refunded, part of them were refunded in 2006. And because they were advanced refunded at that time, they could not be refunded again until 90 days from the call date, which is February 1st, 2015. So, now that we're within that 90-day window, we can call in these bonds. We've been watching them for a number of years, waiting for this opportunity. And again, the purpose of the refunding is very similar to what you would do in refinancing your mortgage. It's a little bit more complicated, obviously, in terms of all the federal rules and regulations. The other thing to know is that when you refund bonds, these bonds were sold in 2006. The bonds we're refunding are the ones that mature in 2016 through 2020. And if you think about that, the bond that was maturing in 2016 was a 10-year bond when you issued it. It's now going to be a one-year bond. So, now instead of paying a 10-year bond rate, you're paying a one-year bond rate. So, that in addition to the fact that the market is low, both those factors result in saving of dollars for the taxpayers of your school district. Doesn't change your revenues to spend or anything else. These are monies dedicated, and the debt service fund can only be used to pay bonds. But by doing this refunding, you'll be able to significantly reduce your property taxes over a four-year period. The average savings will be about $600,000 a year. So, the total is about 2.4 million. Now, since that savings is spread out over time, we calculate what's called the present value of those dollars, and that's about $2.3 million. So, it's a very nice savings. The percentage of savings is about eight, about, well, we calculated about 8%. State minimums for advanced refundings is 3%, so it's a very good refunding. And so, that's the first issue. Any questions?
All right, yeah, Jim?
Chair, in the resolution, it talks about the certain maturities of the district's $45,470,000 general obligation school bondings. And yet, is this, was that the total amount at the time? And this portion is only going to be for the $24,360,000 for the next four years?
Correct. The other bonds have all, have all either been paid or will be paid in the next year. And so, this is what's remaining that is callable, is the 26 million. That's correct. Or 24 million, excuse me.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Let's move to a vote on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to keep.
Okay, the second issue is alternative facility bonds. And your district is one of the fortunate, about 25 largest districts in the state that are eligible under this program. It requires that you have a certain minimum number of square feet of buildings. And what it allows you to do is do deferred maintenance, health and safety kinds of projects, capital projects. And you can either finance those projects by selling bonds or making a pay-as-you-go levy. And a couple, about two years ago, we put together a significant plan, working with the board and with Rod and Les, and how to finance those projects over the next several years. We're doing $15 million a year in projects each year for the first, I believe, 10 years or 15?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, and then dropping it down to $7 million a year in the remaining years after that. We did the first bond issue back in 2013. This is the second in the series of bond issues. And again, the idea, what we've been doing, is we put together a plan where we look at the levies that relate to your capital projects. So, your building bonds and your alternative facility bonds, the pay-as-you-go levy, and your OPAM levy, and some of the, all those levies that you really don't have a lot of control over. And the idea is, we put together this plan and structure so that the tax rate, we are able to sell these bonds without increasing the tax rate to taxpayers. And so, the idea is, this will finance projects in fiscal '16 and '17.
Right.
In addition to the proceeds from the bonds, there will be a pay-as-you-go levy that's about $3 million a year. You also get about $1.6 or $1.7 million from the state and state aid. Some of that goes against your bonds, some of it goes against your pay-as-you-go levy. But when you put all that together, you'll be able to make that $15 million a year in improvements to your buildings. If you look at the way this is structured, in order to keep the tax impact down, the bonds don't mature until 2034 to 2038. But again, the reason for that is to, is to keep that tax rate level over time. But there, again, the idea is that this will not result in an increase in your taxes for that category of levies that we're comparing here. You know, there's some levies that the state has control over. That if the state changes some policies, you might not have any control over. But again, the specific levies in this category are generally relating to buildings and facilities.
And also, part of the reason of extending them over a longer period of time, the majority of the projects that are being done at the buildings are more infrastructure-type changes. So, there are things that are going to be in the building for 20, 30 years before we'll have to redo them again. So, it's taking some of the original buildings, the original plumbing, the original electrical and all the rest, and upgrading that, and that's part of the processes. So, it's kind of giving your, the back, all the behind-the-scenes type of things of working in a building. It's upgrading those to current levels.
The other thing to remember about selling long-term bonds, in addition to the fact that you're paying for long-term assets here, is that people are constantly moving in and out of your school district. And if you sell all the bonds upfront short, then the people that live here right now are paying for it, the cost. If you spread that cost over a longer period of time, then some of the people that move in, move out, won't pay, have to pay for those. But some people that move in later will be helping to pay for some of those costs as well. So, it spreads the cost across the population as it changes in the district.
All right. I think, before we get any further into the conversation, we should probably read this resolution onto the record. Jim, you had your hand up. I assume you wanted to read it. You were dying to do so.
Sure. I enjoy reading these financial resolutions. It resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 271, State of Minnesota, as follows. The School Board hereby finds and declares that it is necessary and expedient for Independent School District 271 to issue its fully-registered general obligation alternative facilities bonds pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 123B, Point 59, Subdivision 3, and Chapter 475. As amended, to fund a portion of the costs of the following projects as included in its 10-year facility plan approved by the School Board and the Commissioner of Education and related financing costs, miscellaneous deferred maintenance projects at various district facilities as included in the district's approved 10-year facility plan. The bonds would be issued in the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $25,965,000. The district will conform to all aspects of the attached extract of meeting minutes and Exhibit A.
Second.
All right. Now, do we have questions?
So, I had a question that it was originally a 10-year bond, and now we're increasing it to a 23-year bond?
No, it wasn't originally a 10-year bond. These, this, like I say, when we put this plan together, started two and a half years ago or something like that, we put together a series of bond issues, about every two years issuing bonds. But one of the criteria for issuing, for setting up the payment schedule was we did not want to have property taxes increasing. And so, in order to, what we're doing is mixing and matching a combination of the bond issues with the pay-as-you-go levies and the state aids, and mixing and matching that in such a way, and when you combine that with the payment schedules, that we maintain a level tax rate. If that helps.
Yeah, fine. Good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I do have one more, just a procedural thing. A lot of times when we sell bonds, we sell bonds and we take the bids on the day of your board meeting, which is, next board meeting is December 8th. There are some other bond issues out there on that same day. So, what we're trying to do is not put you in competition with other people for bidders on your bonds. You've got a significant amount of bonds here. You've got about almost 50, you know, about $50 million in bonds. So, the plan is that when we, that when you come to the board meeting on the 8th, we will have what's called a parameters resolution that says, for the refunding bonds, there will be a minimum level of savings set. And for the alternative facility bonds, there'll be a maximum interest rate set. We will actually take the bonds two days later, when the bond, when the bond market isn't quite as busy. On that day, we will need, we'll have a, and we've done this on your bonds before. And what'll happen is, then on that date, as long as the bids that come in, the best bid, meets those parameters, the Board Chair and the Executive Director of Finance and Support Services will sign off on the proposal. And the board, the action that you take at your next meeting will cover everything so that there will be no further action required after that. And then we will make sure that you get a report back after the 10th that shows the actual results of those sales.
Yeah, Superintendent.
Any advantage going out before the other bond sales?
At this point, probably mechanically, it's not possible to get everything done in time to do it early. And I, you know, as long as they're not on the same day, generally. Well, and Mondays tend to be the worst day because so many school boards and a lot of other county governments, city governments meet on Mondays. So, we've had pretty good success moving some bond sales to a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday date when the market isn't quite as busy.
Thank you.
You know, and whether Monday's going to be better or after, you know, worse, that's hard to know.
All right. Any questions? All right, we'll move to vote on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Number 3, Community Services Programs Fee Change for 2015, 2016. Tom?
Chair, it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approved the proposed fee changes for Early Childhood Family Education, Early Learners Academy, Kid Safari, and School Readiness.
Second.
All right, I'm moved and seconded. Tom, what have you got for us?
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, cabinet, listening audience. As a reminder, every year about this time, we come with the community service fees that are not approved as part of the regular budget adopted in June. And the reason we come now is many of the community service programs start advertising and registering participants for the 2015, '16 year in January. So, we asked for this pre, really a preapproval of fees. So, this isn't all the community service fees, just those that need to be pre-approved. In addition to the resolution, we sent you some additional backup information to help you understand the complexity of the fees and the reason we're changing the fees. And as with all community service fees, it's always a fine line between charging enough to keep the program self-supporting and not pricing ourselves out of the business in the various fee ranges. So, unless you have questions, that's all I have to present.
Okay. Questions, comments from board members? Tom?
Yeah, so, in the change of these fees for the school readiness, as we can see, there are some substantial changes in them. And I was wondering, some people's fees will be going down because we're going more based on a sliding scale, and some people will be going up. Do you have any idea, percentage-wise, of those that are enrolled now, if they were to enroll next year, would they be seeing an increase or a reduction in their monthly fees? Does that question make sense?
Try again. I'm not sure.
Okay, so, at the top end, the fees are going up quite considerably. But there's a lot more people that will be qualifying for a reduced rate. Do you have any idea, percentage-wise, how many people would qualify for a reduced rate? Or how many people will be having to pay the full fee?
We actually did, I didn't bring it, we did an analysis based on this year's registration. And again, a little bit complicated because we're reducing the number of, in school readiness, going from six to five different pay, fee levels. So, to say who would qualify next year based on that, there are more people that are in the bottom tiers of fees than there are at the top. And the reason that we're eliminating the fees at the bottom, again, in trying to be congruent with the intent of the legislation, that the school readiness fees are directed at those at-risk families as defined by multiple different categories, including inability to pay. So, there are, I can't tell you by category, but I can tell you that the mix of these fees, even though some people's fees will be going down and some will be going up, that we will, using assumptions of similar enrollments for next year, our overall amount of fees will be more in aggregate.
Okay, so, per student enrolled, I was trying to figure out, I mean, the amount of parent, kids that enrolled in the class, are their fees going to be going up or down? Can you tell? Do you have any idea if you can tell that? Do you know what I'm saying?
Again, I could provide you by cell. I don't have those. Based on this year's enrollment, we could take, the bottom three tiers are all paying less, and the top tiers are paying more. I'd have to go back to the data and tell you what the numbers were. And again, that's only, you don't know what the impact of either lowering or raising fees would have. But based on this year's enrollments, I could tell you how many that affected if you wanted that information.
Okay, that'd be great. I think, just looking at this, I think this is a good direction we're going. I think this is going to open, it's going to remove some of the barriers of preschool, especially doing the before and after preschool childcare, which is a barrier. But I think that there's going to be a lot more parents that can, will be able to afford these classes. So, I think it's a.
And that absolutely was the intent, and it was from looking at our data and determining that, based on other programming, kinder prep that we have offered for free for families in the free and reduced category for years now. in the free and reduced category for years now, we looked at similar participation in both school readiness and ECFE, and determined that by moving to a, for people in free and reduced, to be free, we would eliminate that barrier, which was one of the major barriers of participation. And if they don't participate, we can't reach our goal of eliminating that achievement gap.
Second. Okay. And I have another question, but I can't remember it at the moment. Anyway, I think that's it.
Yeah, Rick.
I know we've had the conversation before where you said you walk sort of the fine line about raising enough to pay for it, but if you go too much, then you lose enrollment. Do we have some sort of contingency plan? Because, you know, some of these, you know, if it goes up 50 cents a day, really isn't a big, that big of a deal. For instance, after school, a kid safari, if it's 50 cents a day, it's probably not a huge impact. Some of them I noticed go up near 20%, it looks like, for the course of the program. Do we have some sort of contingency plan if we do increase these and all of a sudden we see the bottom fall out, so to speak?
And that's certainly one of the advantages that we have, that we take our registration so early. And so even as we're developing next year's budget, we will be registering people for this year so we can run some, based on that registration information, we can do some projections on actual revenue. For the fees, as you mentioned, in early learners academy, in kid safari, they're pretty standard increases that I wouldn't consider are going to impact enrollment. The biggest one, the biggest change that we have to look at is school readiness, where the changes are the largest. In ECFE, the entire revenue generated by fees is only about $24,000. So as a percentage of the budget, there are ways to address that, either by recruiting more enrollments or making some cuts in some other areas. So we do have some plans, and the good thing is we have some time to react if, if the fees that we've set have a negative impact on enrollment, especially for the people who are paying at the upper end.
Thanks.
Yeah, Tom.
Can I remember my question? The way these fees are structured, is this going to make that these classes are self-sufficient? Or are they still going to need to be subsidized with other community ed funds and general ed funds and stuff?
Unfortunately, we're still a long ways from having all of our early childhood needs supported by what the state provides in terms of funding. And fees are just one of the many, many sources that we, similar to specialized cross-subsidized that priority to make sure we can get as many of our students in that program.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? All right, we'll move to vote on this one. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Next up, number four is our vision cards presentation. We have David Heistad to guide us through this particular one.
Chairman Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and four directors, I have the privilege of bringing to you the academic vision cards for this next year. This is culmination of work over the last couple of years, working with the cabinet and providers of services at each level in our pathways. What we have hopefully is a alliance system that starts from the individual child and parent or guardian, and comes all the way up to the school board level in terms of indicators of progress along the continuum. And the purpose of this presentation is to share the pathways to graduation vision cards, patterned after the work that we have seen from Dennis Cheesebrow, and with our own unique branding on it, and indicate that there, for each one of the milestones, there's a measure, an indicator, and then we, at the end, have a summary of all the milestones. And interspersed, we have some data to kind of show the trends of how we've been doing. And then finally, we have an achievement gap measure, which is an average of the 15 schools' measures. So we've tried to take existing measures that already exist in the school information reports, and existing measures that are part of the Q-Cop for individual classrooms and for individual teachers, and then the way it's displayed on the hub, and create vision cards from that. Basically, we start from the strategic plan, and we try to capsulize vision cards that aren't too many. Having 50 vision cards probably would be a little onerous. Having one probably isn't sufficient. So we've come out with vision cards that are parsimonious, is the word of the day. We want to be economical. We don't want to spend all day looking at data, but we want to have the key elements dealt with, yeah. And then this informs improvement plans at the district level, at the department level, at the school level, down to the classroom level. And then we'll come back with monitoring reports throughout the year. So this is basically the format of the executive summary. Across the top, you'll see each one of the pathway chronology displayed, starting with pre-K ready and going all the way to college and career ready. And the system that we're proposing is a four-level system. So, you know, we have identified benchmarks along the way that would indicate what would be the vision, what would be ultimate success. Level three could be considered making progress towards that success. Level two, we may be more at a baseline level, and level one's there in case we fall back. And so we'll give you a chance to see the summary at the end. The first measure that is indicated is the preschool ready. And we have an assessment in place that the district started in the last couple of years. It's the Minneapolis Preschool Screening Instrument that's been revised several times. This assessment does predict kindergarten readiness, but at the present time, we do not have scores in Bloomington so that we can do the study to see what score on the MPSIR actually predicts kindergarten readiness. I use this instrument in Minneapolis quite successfully. And currently, the data that we're keeping is just whether students have met the criteria or not. So it's yes or no, and students who do not meet the basic criteria are referred for special education assessment and screening. But what we hope to do is to find a level that's commensurate with being on track for kindergarten. So this is to be determined. The next measure is kindergarten readiness. And the last time I spoke with the school board and discussed with the cabinet, we were using an old measure of kindergarten readiness that had been in place for many, many years. It turned out that that, that measure was very successful. The performance of students was very successful in terms of the old standards for reading well by third grade. The new standards for reading well by third grade are considerably more demanding, and so we've recalibrated to see what percentage of our students are on course to read well by grade three based on these new higher standards. And so whereas you were used to seeing 88%, 90%, 91% in terms of ready to learn, now we're calibrating to a much higher standard, and we're at 58.3%. And I might comment that the research on readiness for literacy emphasizes some other aspects other than just the alphabetic principle. With the old assessment, it was if you knew your letters, you basically were ready for kindergarten. But the new assessment and the new criteria will emphasize language, the development of vocabulary, and listening comprehension, as well as something that's called phonological awareness, hearing the sounds. This isn't reading yet, but it's pre-reading kinds of skills. So we have already calibrated that a score on the current assessment of 70 predicts being ready to read well in grade three, and we'll continue to pilot the new assessment that's coming out that adds comprehension. One of the things that I tell to parents at PTA is, you know, it really is key having children on your lap, listening to them, and interacting with them as you read the book to them. And it doesn't hurt to ask some questions, too. Questions about letters and words, or questions about what do you think is going to happen next, or, you know, the literature seems to show that the more the caregiver provides interaction with a child around a book, the more these skills are going to be developed. So, so these are, you know, very common sense kinds of indicators, and I think you're going to see that we're going to have more and more students successful in this readiness for kindergarten.
Excuse me, David. Jim, did you have a quick question?
I had a quick question in regards to this presentation. It's a lot of information, and would it be possible to ask questions as we go along? Would you feel comfortable about that at a particular grade level and if it's proper, rather than waiting to get to the end and then saying, let's go back to pre-K or let's go back to third grade?
I defer to the chair. Would it be fine with me?
All right. Well, that would be my question. We just have a few pauses in there for...
Sure.
Yeah.
Because, you know, as the state's ready for kindergarten, and then we're making some assumptions that the kindergarten students then are going to be able to read well by third grade. And so we have a variety of assessment documents or vehicles that we can use so that we can predict that they will be almost ready for third grade.
Right. And you'll see that with each one of these vision cards is that in preschool, we're trying to predict kindergarten readiness. In kindergarten, we're going to predict age three, I mean, grade three, and then we'll continue to do that all the way up to post-secondary. And then where I have data, I'll present some of the history of the data. This is kind of a new indicator, and we'll continue to monitor from here. But it is kind of looking forward at where's the next step along the way and setting the benchmark so we can be successful at the next step.
Yeah, Rick.
I guess since we're asking questions, one question I came, I thought of when I saw this is, since current progress, we're at 58.3%. Is this a statewide assessment, and then do we have the data so we know sort of how we measure up compared to other districts?
Well, unfortunately, the state isn't going to have a single measure. We are currently using an assessment that has been validated with the MCA twos and MCA threes. We think it's a very solid assessment, but I will have to submit it for approval by the state to be included as part of their... They have four right now that they're considering for further use in the state. I feel strongly that a simple checklist or observation tool that doesn't actually ask children to tell you their letters and really get in one-to-one, isn't sufficient as a screener to let teachers know what they should be working on. So I'm pushing for our screener to be adopted in other places in the state. The new screener, I think, will take the best items from the Minneapolis assessment, combine them with the best items from the Bloomington. I'm thinking about calling it the BICA, the Bloomington Early Kindergarten Assessment. And so I've already met with the state, and I told them what we're working on, and I think they're supportive of the research that we're doing. But at first, when the committee was formed, I thought they were going to come out with maybe one assessment, and you'd be able to compare yourself to that assessment. But I don't think that's going to be true. With the kindergarten assessment, then we move on to grade three, reading well by grade three. We've submitted a report to the state every year for the last several years, and we've calibrated our reading well by grade three to the pathways so that we've chosen, with the help of the early literacy team, to focus on that on course to get into a four-year college is kind of our definition of reading well by third grade. And we know it's early to be projecting out to college, but this pathway then is right about at the national norm, and it stays consistent across all the grade levels. One of the problems with the new MCA cutoff is it's well above grade level, and that to calibrate the reading well by third grade to this MCA three standard, we would be asking children to be reading at a level above where they would need to be to get into college or above where they'd need to be to be at the national norm. So the team decided that we would calibrate at this on-track for getting into a four-year college. And currently, we have 61.3% of our students who are at that level in the third grade. And so, well, you know, we're monitoring the students that are continuously enrolled so that they, the students that are there from kindergarten to third grade will provide the data for this metric. Students who come in right before the test won't be included. But I did put together a graph, which I think you saw last time I reported, that showed both the percentage of students who are on-track, who are continuously enrolled, and in this graph, it would be the orange line up there. And then the blue triangle indicates students that came in after kindergarten. And there's always this gap between the mobile students and the continuously enrolled. You know, the message, we would like it to be possible for all of our families to stay with us from a kindergarten to grade three. We realize the problems of housing and other reasons why parents need to move. But it is clear that the students that stay with us for this extended period of time are reading very well, and the others are a little bit below 50%. So we go from on-track to read well in grade three to grade five. So this would be a measure for on-course for middle school. To be able to do mathematics, the big topic in middle school mathematics is algebra. But the critical benchmark is really at fifth grade in terms of knowledge proportions, fractions, decimals, et cetera. And students who are at that level in fifth grade tend to do well in middle school. If they don't have those kind of basic skills, then they tend to struggle a little bit in middle school math until they've mastered those. And we have a very high percentage of continuously enrolled students meeting that benchmark. Currently, 76.7% of the students who are continuously enrolled from kindergarten on are at that high benchmark. You can see on this graph that the students start out in math a little bit above on-track for getting into a four-year college. And after they've taken their fifth-grade math test, you can see how close they are to being able to get into... to being able to get into a selective college like the University of Minnesota. But again, the blue triangle indicates those students that came in after kindergarten have a lower percentage, about sixty-four percent of those students. So, here again, we have an indicator on the pathway that we can keep track of on a consistent basis. One might ask, why aren't we using the MCAs at fifth grade? Well, it turns out that the MCAs are very unstable. And every time you change the standards, the cut score changes. This most recent time, they fixed the problem at third grade reading where the, the benchmark was well below grade level. But then they came up with an unexpected problem that the MCA at fifth grade in mathematics was extremely low. And so the kid, students were actually scoring higher in fourth grade than they were in fifth grade on the MCA. So, there are these problems with calibration and also with being able to provide useful information to teachers that compelled me to, to put all of these pathway indicators on the MAPS scale score, which hasn't changed in twenty-five years. That scale has stayed consistent, whereas the MCAs are bound to change again next year when they go to computer adaptive assessment. And so, that's the rationale. As we move through the indicators, the next one is a grade eight measure indicating whether students are on course for high school. The state has mandated the Explorer test in grade eight as a college predictor, college readiness predictor. We have used the Explorer assessment in Bloomington for many years. Some districts are just starting with it this year and getting used to it. But the company has calibrated where you have to be on the Explorer in eighth grade to predict various levels of ACT. So, it was very easy to set the score of fifteen as the, the cut score for, on track for getting into a four-year college, which we're considering as on course for high school. Here we have sixty-six point three percent of the students on course for that particular indicator. And this, again, is continuously enrolled students from fifth grade all the way to eighth grade. So, we're following kids across a period of time again. When you look at the most recent data, you can see that the percentage of students hitting that benchmark has increased in reading, increased in math, increased in science and in English. So, in every one of the subtests of the Explorer, we have increased the percentage of kids that are on track. And we use the composite score so, so we don't have to follow, you know, four different graphs. The composite basically takes an equal weight for reading math, science, and English.
Yeah.
Is this, like, if we look at that as in an individual way or as a whole? I'm wondering, do, do we get more students taking the test?
Yeah, we were testing most students, but now all students except for those special ed students who, who take the MTAS, they would be your multiply handicapped or disabled students, must take the Explorer. So, we did have an increase in participation, but also an increase in score, which is really pretty exciting. Because usually the students who were not considered ready for the Explorer were pretty low. So, this is really positive results. Now, you can monitor the reading, the math, the science, and the English separately or you can, can look at the composite. Most universities look at the composite for the ACT. So, we're using the composite as our average. But when we get pathways on the hub that indicate progress from the Explorer to the PLAN to the ACT, you can, you can look by reading alone or math alone. And you may see that your child is ready for a select college in math, but is still struggling a bit in reading. So, you can differentiate it. So, it's nice that, and one of the nice things about the Explorer is it also has a career interest inventory. So, you get some useful information about whether your child wants to be a social work secretary, which was high for me, or a forester, which was negative three at the time I took the test. But I sense that I've been to the boundaries and, uh, Boundary Waters and I'm a real fan of the, the forest. The next indicator is college and career readiness. And here we use the actual ACT. Students who have scored on the composite at nineteen or higher have a good chance of getting into a four-year college in Minnesota. There are a couple of four-year colleges in Minskew that require twenty and some eighteen. So, I took nineteen as kind of the average. Currently, we have seventy point six percent of our continuously enrolled students on track to get into a four-year college. For those students who are continuously enrolled from eighth grade to eleventh grade. And so, that's, that's quite, quite high, very nice. And we're seeing more students in poverty and students of color who are at that level. And so, it's, it's really good that we have all students taking the test. Bloomington was generous and paid for all students to take the tests last year. This year, the state is picking up that expense and my budget has been decreased accordingly. And, well, I'm really pleased that the state is doing that. It's an equity issue. I think that some families and students, even though there were scholarships available, didn't, didn't, you know, take the assessment. Having it in school during the day allows all students to take the assessment.
Jim?
Mr. Chairman, did you, when you said all students not, are taking the ACTs that we paid for last year, is that eleven and twelve or ten, eleven and twelve? What grades?
Thanks, Director Sorum. It's tenth grade that we require all students to take and the state will pay for it. If a student wants to take it multiple times, to take it in eleventh and twelfth grade, then the family picks up the cost. The, the last, last year, there were a few students who, whose parents didn't sign up for the ACT. Those students took an alternative assessment called the Work Keys. The Work Keys is really a very appropriate assessment for special ed students who couldn't take the ACT. But this year, the state wants all students, except for those special ed students, to take the ACT and not have the alternatives. Also, last year, there's, there was the Armed Services Assessment and there were a couple other alternatives. Students could certainly take those, but they also need to take the ACT now, so. And that way, the state will get a robust data set for every single student. And so, parents may say, well, we took the test in tenth grade and, and we think that our child had a high enough score. Do they have to take it again in eleventh grade? And the, the answer from the state is yes. They want all students to be included in that, so. It doesn't hurt. I mean, it's a little bit of time, but, but students can surprise themselves and do even better on the test. So, that's career and college readiness. Here's an indicator that shows the Explorer to the PLAN to the ACT. And it shows that seventy-six point seven percent of the students, let's see, seventy point six percent of the students were on track for the ACT on the composite. And then the students new to the district that came in after the Explorer was given were at forty-nine point five percent. So, even in high school, you see the students that come in after the cohort comes to ninth grade, score less well. And four-year graduation rate with the explosive jump. Eighty-seven point one percent of our students graduated within four years, which is extremely high. As I've mentioned before at other meetings, we actually have very few students who drop out. We have less than two percentage of our, our class actually drop out before graduation. The other thirteen percent who don't graduate in four or five years go on and graduate in five or six years, except for those two percent that aren't included. So, it's a very high rate, but we're shooting for ninety percent. And so, we're going to continue to hopefully see increases across time. Here's a graph that you've seen before that shows a graduation trend by racial ethnic group. And so, you can see that every single group of students by racial ethnic category increased significantly. And overall, we had an increase from eighty-three to eighty-seven percentage of our students graduating. And the final indicator is an achievement gap indicator. And I struggled with this and the cabinet did too. At first, my one-point-oh draft had about ten different indicators for gap because for every of the indicators, I had a gap indicator. So, I'd have a reading and a math gap indicator for third grade and fifth grade and all the way up. And then I, I had this insight that the state is using a measure, a single measure of gap reduction for the school information report. And couldn't we take the average of all those school information and have a single indicator for achievement gap? And to do that, I would have to, to spend a little bit more time. I know we talked about the MMR in the past. There are three different types of, of indicators for achievement where you have achievement level, which is percent proficient. But then you have growth, how much learning took place from last year to this year. And then you've got gap reduction. And what gap reduction does is it compares subgroups of students to their state counterpart. And here's an example from Poplar Bridge. They had very high proficiency and very high growth compared to schools of similar demographics and also high achievement gap reduction. The key, achievement gap reduction is very difficult to get points for because you have to compare how your free and reduced lunch students did versus the state's non-free and reduced lunch. Your ELL students have to do better than the state's non-ELL students in terms of growth. So, it's difficult to get points. But in this case, Poplar Bridge was one of those schools that, that did well. And here's, here's kind of the sub-level. The, the graph that the state presents, it looks at each one of the indicators. This is free and reduced price lunch. And it gives a graph showing whether the school did better than the state norms. And that would be on the, for example, point one-seven for free and reduced lunch school growth and reading. And that point one-seven is almost point-two standard deviations above the, the state norms. And it's also better than the non-free and reduced lunch students at the state level, where it's point oh-nine. So, they made almost twice the growth of the non-free and reduced lunch students at the state. In math, however, even though they did better than the state norms, the, the non-free and reduced lunch kids grew more. So, they got credit for positive gap reduction for reading, but not for math. So, it is very difficult to get these points, but they are calibrated the same for every single school in the state. And if we take an average of each one of the schools, we'll have a district indicator that we can compare across time. There are, you know, advantages and disadvantages to parsimony. And so, one of the disadvantages here is it takes some explaining. But I, I have spent quite a bit of time with each of the schools, getting to know this indicator, an achievement gap reduction. The state's going to keep it the same as long as they have the waiver from the feds. And for now, it seemed like the, the simplest way to, to present it, although not the easiest to explain. I also want to point out, when we're talking about gaps, that the typical way of look, looking at achievement gaps in the country is pretty simplistic. You usually look at just one factor at a time. So, people will say Minnesota has the biggest gap between African-American and white students in the country. But as I found out from an excellent presentation put together by our superintendent, it doesn't take into account the fact that our white students have some of the lowest rates of poverty and English language learning in the country. And our African-American students in, in the state have some of the highest rates of poverty and ELL. There aren't too many states that have the, you know, the great diversity that we have of, of students from Somalia, Ethiopia, et cetera. And so, you know, we, we want to not be simplistic in looking at these racial ethnic gaps. We want to make sure that we understand that there's a lot that goes, you know, beneath it. And I know that Director Oliva had asked for some information that I provided you today that shows that basically when you look at the math gap, if you control for free and reduced lunch, if you control for percent poverty, if you control for being continuously enrolled and also special education, there's very little difference between the racial ethnic groups. So, so that's just something we all need to be aware of. Unfortunately, our students in poverty are not making huge gains on a year-to-year basis. We need to increase the, the rate of growth. We are seeing some progress, but it's pretty incremental. So, all of us need to work to make sure that students that have risk factors like poverty or like high mobility really are getting the kind of learning supports that they need. So, that's my soapbox for today. Are there any other questions?
Jim?
Back, one slide when you had the Poplar Bridge MCA three, there was a, the next one.
Yes.
There's a record count, ninety-two? Was that just the number of participants?
That would be the number of free reduced lunch priced students in the school who had a test score last year and this year.
Okay.
So, then they measure how much learning took place and compare each child's progress to similar students who started at the same level. And if, if they make the same growth as the students who started just like them, then the, the indicator is a zero. It just means you made the same growth. If you end up with a positive, that means you made more growth than the, the similar students. And both the state's non-free and reduced lunch and the school's free and reduced lunch made more progress than the, than the state norm. But in this case, Poplar Bridge made about twice as much growth with their free and reduced price lunch kids as the state's non-free and reduced lunch students. So, it gets complicated. Unfortunately, they made it, so they do subtraction. And if you get a negative score on the report card, that's good for gap reduction. Negative means you reduce the gap, which is just the opposite of the growth score where positive is good. So, there's work that could be done to make this a little bit more understandable. But that's my mission, is to make sure that all of our stakeholders understand it.
Great.
Other questions?
Any other questions? Rick?
I'd just like to make an observation about what Dr. Heiseid just mentioned about the additional data he sent for those who are paying attention. But for instance, if we look at the MCA three percent proficient and you look at the Hispanic population overall, it's at thirty-four percent. But then when you control for poverty, ELL, mobility, and special ed, it's at- But then when you control for poverty, ELL, mobility, and special ed, it's at seventy-five percent, where the white students are at seventy-nine percent. So the gap is significantly reduced to four points from thirty-five points or whatever it is initially. And so, I think that's important for us to know and it's, it's important for us to, I don't know, if advertise would be the, the way to go. Because I think a lot of times what people will see is they'll just see Hispanic is thirty-four percent, but they won't realize that that's because, or, or a huge part of that is ELL students taking a test in English are going to have a harder time taking the test, especially depending on how long they've been here or, or how long they've been in the program. You know, it's a, it's a huge factor. You know, like I know my cousin came here, I think she was nineteen. She started as a sophomore then in our high school. But she, her, her homework was to watch Sesame Street because she literally knew no English.
Yeah.
And so, to put someone like that in a situation where they're taking this test, it brings down your whole school and it's not, it's not fair. It's also, when we look at it this way, it's actionable. And so, I, I guess in, in future presentations, maybe from the, from the district, when we look at these, if, if we can have it broken out like this, we can say, okay, so we see that there's still, the gap between African-American and white, even when you control for that, is still larger than the other subgroups. So, you know, maybe we can think of reasons why that possibly could be. I have some that I can think of off the top of my head, but it would just be speculation, so it's not worth mentioning. So, thank you for sending the, that additional data. And you had mentioned you, you have, you can get the reading data, it would just take a few days.
I'm working on the reading data where I want to control for free and reduced lunch, I mean, ELL status all the way from kindergarten through fifth grade. So I make sure that students didn't start out and then lose the ELL services. I'll also try to figure out a way to do this with graduation rates, but the state isn't very helpful in the way they provide the data at this point. I should also indicate that our indicators are fragile or, or not as robust as we would like. An indicator like free and reduced lunch is really pretty minimal compared to knowing family income. Mother's education is a huge predictor. People that have mother or caregiver education levels, that predicts over and above free and reduced lunch a lot. So in some cases, when I did these analyses in Minneapolis, it was clear that certain groups of students might not be receiving free or reduced priced lunch, but might be just barely over the criteria, whereas another group might have average family income of fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars more. So these indicators are the best that we have right now, but some, sometimes I wish I had even more detailed information. But it is clear that you go from a thirty-seven percent gap when you look at all students between white and Hispanic to a four percent gap. And Asian students, there was a gap, but actually Asian students ended up higher than white students after you control for these factors. So I'm glad that, that Director Oliva brought the idea to, to mind and will continue to present data in that, in this way. Tom?
Yeah, when I got this, I had a question, but I figured you wouldn't have time to answer before the board meeting starting to is like four o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
I was wondering if you knew how much these risk factors affect each group? If you have those numbers in your head somewhere?
Poverty affects all groups pretty much equally, you know. And some, I wonder, at least in Minneapolis, it seemed like American Indian and African-American poverty might have been more intense than Asian poverty, but it's really hard to tell.
So our students here?
ELL obviously is not much of a factor for white students. We don't have a lot of immigrant white students. So it's, it's most predominant with Hispanic and Asian, but also we have one of the largest Somali and Oremo populations in, in the country as well.
So what I thought was missing from this was the size of the groups. If you look at like-
Oh, the ends, yeah.
If you look like the Latino group, I mean, you have the, they're, what is it, or the Hispanic, you have thirty-four percent proficient. Well, how many were in that group versus how many were in the-
There were two hundred and seventy-seven students total who were non-free reduced, non-ELL, non-mobile, non-special ed. Only one of those students was an American Indian. All the rest of the groups had at least five students. But Asian was twenty-five, white was two hundred and thirty-three. And so, both Hispanic and African-American groups were, were low when you get down to all of these factors being not present.
Because I think that's what we're missing here is that, that these risk factors disproportionately affect students of color, so-
Oh, exactly. That's a key point.
This is kind of giving a misperception of the achievement gap because you're breaking it down just by race and you're saying, well, there really is no gap. Well, then you have to take into account that these factors disproportionately affect people of color and that's why we have such a large gap.
Yeah, that, that's precisely the point that Superintendent Fujitaki was making with the gap data that's presented nationwide where they say Minnesota's got the biggest gap. It's the same thing here, that most of our students of color are in poverty or ELL or highly mobile or all three of those things together. And then when you take into account, yeah, that, that continuous enrollment, it really does narrow down the number of students in the pool, but it gives you a real strong factor for stability.
Yes, and my preference would be that we didn't, this type of document, we wouldn't publish because I think it's misleading and confusing people, to people unless you put that-
I think this is for a board-
Yeah.
For, for the kind of discussion that we're having right now. But when I get a chance in the public, this is a, a point I try to make because I think the typical way of presenting the data can be misleading.
Well, see, the reason why I like it this way is because if you just show the difference is thirty-four percent to seventy-one percent, for instance, Hispanic to white. What we're saying is without explaining that, oh, by the way, the, the, the reason why, or a huge reason why we have identified that issue is because of ELL status or poverty or mobility. I think it, it makes us say, well, we're underserving our Hispanic community. Right? Which, we, we get that perception a lot. Or we start saying, well, we need to target Hispanic students for certain things because we're putting a blanket or, or we're putting them all in the same group. We're really, you know, maybe it, it's a small, and yes, they're disproportionately affected, but maybe these twelve students, we really don't need to, to worry about because they don't have any of these risk factors. Right? And, and so, that's, that's why I like seeing it broken out is because then, like for instance, just taking my own situation, if we put our kids next to each other, they'd say, okay, well, Rick's kids have a lower chance of succeeding than Tom's kids because Rick's kids are in the African-American category. Right? But if you said, yeah, but if my kids aren't English language learners, if they aren't in poverty and whatever, if they've been here since kindergarten, that's not even a, an issue. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I just think that if we do it this way, it's, it could give the perception that everyone's starting at the same starting point and that there aren't other factors like these risk factors that we're controlled for, which I think is important to emphasize that they're disproportionately with other, with other groups. And if a Latino family doesn't have any of those risk factors, then we wouldn't be targeting those kids for extra services anyway. So it really wouldn't apply. I think it just, when we, when we look at the achievement gap and we look at our population, then we can, it gives you a predictor of success, not the actual determination success.
Some, some kids are targeted for special assistance, perhaps when they don't need to be because they get lumped into these groups. And I think what this does is this shows how much impact it actually has. And so, you can say, no, look, if you are in these categories, that is the actual problem. Like for instance, my parents are in Cuba right now. There's people that like poverty there means you don't have a, literally, you don't have a roof on your house. You have walls and when it rains, you go to the neighbor's house. Right? But they can all read, right? So they're all in the, they're, they're all ethnically diverse, they're all poor, but they're still achieving at high levels when it comes to, to school. Right? They're a very highly educated population. And so, you can say, well, the race then isn't the issue. There's some other factor that's causing these problems, that's causing these achievement gaps. And so, we need to look at it and say, one thing is almost none of the children in a Cuban school don't speak Spanish. There's very little immigration from outside of Cuba, right? So you'd have very few Spanish language learners in your classroom. So it's very easy for all those kids to achieve well in their classroom because they all speak the, the language natively. But what we're saying is here, if you don't speak the language natively, it's going to be a huge impact. So what I'm suggesting is now that we've identified a possible issue, what are we going to do to make sure that those ELL students can achieve at, at the high levels versus, versus just lumping them all into one group?
Well, your, your points are well taken and that's been unfortunately the way the press usually just controls it by the first column, you know? They put everybody in the same category regardless of any risks or conditions. And so, that's what we see. When they first came out with No Child Left Behind, we had, those are the five categories that they have, plus there's three more categories. So there's eight categories altogether that if your school happened to have all eight in a sizable group, you would never reach the, the maximum that you need to have. And so therefore, you were a failing school. So, and, so as some, I've heard some districts keep some of the students out of those tests when they take them so that they can get a higher ranking. Now, that's just been somewhat the historical perspective that we've seen over the years. Now, we're finally getting into, as Dave has shown, some of the risk factors that go into why the achievement gap is identified the way it is.
You know, and another column that could be useful too, and from my perspective, would be the one that controlled where it said, on the right, we have without any of those. Well, what if we had a category or a column that said the students with all of those? So we have the, the overall, we have without. If we included, okay. What about the white students that are from, I don't know, Poland or something that they don't speak English natively?
Yeah.
And they came in after, you know, they came in in second grade, you know, how, how are they achieving? Because then it, it would, it would just drive home the point that, that these are some factors out of our control and so they're things that we really could then focus and put resources towards.
I think one of the takeaways is that race isn't the whole thing or even the main thing. You know, that race is correlated with all these things like poverty, especially in the Twin Cities areas, most of the African-American students are in poverty. And so, so that's one of the reasons I thought it would be good to display this is that people will say, well, it's a race issue and, you know, it may not be. I, I believe there is discrimination. I believe there is racism. But if you thought that the main factor here was, was racism, well, let's look at the poverty and the mobility, et cetera. So I think for, it's a very complex issue and requires some, some complexity in talking about it. Director Corman has an issue, has a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Nellie. We'll go Nellie then Don.
I'm trying to understand what's happening here. Trying to understand what's going on and kind of getting, trying to get an idea of what this all means still and how we are interpreting things as well. And as I understand how there are several risk factors that definitely affect achievement gap or affect student success in our students of color or all of our students. And as we know that obviously, you know, certain circumstances as poverty and mobility definitely affect that academic success that we would like to see happen in our students. I have to say that leaving the conversation about race on one side and trying to think or trying to pretend that it doesn't have anything to do is a little bit risky because this is not only about whether a child is, is poor or not, but it's also about the kind of opportunities that we provide for each one of them.
I agree.
And how equal those opportunities are given to students. And we do have this belief in our school systems that there are certain kids that are not capable of achieving higher. And then we set our expectations in a very low place where we don't really give them, even though we're providing all those services and then we say we are taking care of them and we're giving them attention. At the same time, we are not really focusing on what they need, only in what we expect them to achieve and to get. So in my perspective, race has a lot to do because it's the way that we perceive certain races and how we set our expectations for our students based on those. And so, and also how we set our expectations accordingly who, accordingly to who and who they are and the situations they live in. So sometimes we see a, a child who is living in poverty and we as teachers or as administrators, sometimes we just assume it's going to be really hard for this student to, to achieve. Okay? Or we see kids who are Hispanic, oh, it's really going to be hard for this student because it's going to be hard for this person to learn how to speak English in a very proficient way. And sometimes you go to the classroom and you'll see your students, your ELL students are capable of having a conversation with you. That's not the problem. They do speak English. Many of them have accomplished that level. But does that mean that then they're able to have success in their academics, that they're doing really well in school? No. Sometimes they're not even, even living in, in tough situations at home. You know, they have loving parents that are taking care of them, are providing for them, are trying their best to help them with school. But there are certain situations that do have to do with race and it doesn't have to do with the fact that the child is coming from a certain race. It comes from the other person, our school system that wants to, to see it as a problem or as we can't do anything about it here. So I'm sorry, but for me, it does have to do with race. So that's just one comment. And I did have a question for you, Dr. Heistah, about, so when we look at all those vision cards and we see and we look about, and we look at the way that students are scoring well or on curves like, like you put it there, and we have those percentages, and then we're able to see if they're on track or not. My question is, what is, what is our plan to kind of monitor the ones that are below those levels? How do we monitor? How do we follow that? Or how would you follow that so that we can provide better support for the ones that really are not making it? Even those who are not doing good at the ACTs or are not doing better, so?
Director Corman, my colleagues waiting patiently behind you are the experts in this area, but we have learning supports initiatives, both in academics and, and non-academic areas. And plans to make those services even more robust, even given the right sizing of the budget. And I think Bloomington is, is doing a very good job in addressing, but could be doing better. When we look at the ELL student progress, we're making incremental progress, but we're not making world-class progress. When we look at the progress for students of color- When we look at the progress for students of color, uh, for our students in poverty, we definitely can't sit on our laurels, even though we're starting to see some, some reduction in the gaps. But I think I'll leave it up to my colleagues when they get a chance to answer your question because it is the key question. What do you do when things aren't going right? And the nice thing is parents get that information on their handheld, uh, computer, uh, in terms of the growth on the map at least, and they get a chance to ask that question. What are you going to do to help me and my child succeed? And I think the more we have information like that, the better. So my job is to get the information right and to explain it in a way that's helpful. I, and like I said, I believe there is racism, there is systematic racism, and, and there's a lot of work to be done there, but it's such a complex issue. If we thought the whole thing was due to race per se, I think we probably would be wrong. Um, I know we need to move to the right sizing the budget, so I'm, I'm glad to...
All right, we finish up, we'll give Don one last chance here.
One last chance.
Well, I just had a few, um, comments about this whole discussion. Clearly those factors, um, are definitely part of the achievement gap. But I guess I was, I was a little concerned about the perception that we may be giving services to students just because they are of color and our students have to qualify, like you don't get into special ed just because you're a student of color, you have to, um, qualify for those services. And I have Asian children and two of them did not get any special services because they were Asian. One had a whole lot of services because he is pretty severely disabled. So I just want to clarify that we're not, we're not targeting students by their race. We're targeting students that need help by their need and by their achievement level.
You do remember the first draft of our Achievement Integration Plan where it said we're going to provide incentives to our, to our students of color to open enroll to Hillcrest? That's providing a service to someone based on their race, not based on their need or what would be best for them. So it's those types of initiatives that happen, it happens all the time where you'll have a group, you'll have a program, you'll create a program, a creative service for African-American students, for Asian students, for Native American students. It happens all the time.
I'm talking about like the learning supports and the, and the supports in the school, though I don't think we're picking and choosing those necessarily by, they have to show some level of need or achievement usually to get into those as far as I know.
Sometimes you can make it look like there's a need where there isn't a need.
Okay.
Because I, I know anecdotally, I know of situations where students will be put it, they'll, when they take their tests, they're on track, but then there'll be some intermediate assessment that'll say, oh, this person isn't on track. Then they'll be put into this program or they'll keep going or they'll struggle or they'll, whatever. And then pretty soon they're, they're out of the program, you know? And, and so it does happen. And I think it's precisely for what Director Corman said because we'll look at someone, we'll say, you're Hispanic, you're going to go in a Hispanic bucket until we make sure that you are, are at such and such benchmark, whether they necessarily were there prior or not. And, and the reason why I say, um, I don't, the reason why I like this is because I, we can say, look, if you're ELL, it doesn't matter if you're Hispanic or Asian. In my opinion, I think it'd be harder to be Asian in ELL because they don't have the same alphabet. Uh, but you can say, it doesn't matter if you're Hispanic, Asian, and like, for instance, I don't even know because sometimes I'm in the black bucket, sometimes I'm in the Hispanic bucket. I'm always confused when I have to fill out those things saying what race are you? Because sometimes they'll say Latino, not Cuban. I'm like, what? Okay. And my dad will say, no, you're black, I'm black, we were slaves, so you're African. I'm like, ah, whatever, right? But it, what this can show is it doesn't matter if, if you are in poverty and you're white, you are going to have many of the same struggles as every other racial group. And so, uh, it's like, I'm not going to say poverty is a disease, but it's like the cold, like if you get the flu, it doesn't matter if you're black, white, Asian, whatever, Indian, it's not going to matter. If you're an English language learner and you're in our school, you're going to have a hard time. And so that's why I want to say, we need to figure out that issue. How do we get our English language learners regardless of which kind of English language learner you are? Because we know that that's the problem. How are we going to get, if you're in poverty, why is that a problem here and not in other places? How can we address that? Is it because of books? Is it because of internet? Is it because of access? Is it because there's a preconceived notion and you get tracked? Is it because they say, okay, well, these students are, are, are overrepresented in the low-track math courses? Do we need to get rid of tracking? I've read articles that said you can close the achievement gap by detracking your classes. The minimum is proficient. The minimum isn't anywhere below proficient. So everybody has to be proficient. And if you aren't, you're going to get as many supports as you have to have until you're proficient. It's not acceptable to be below that. So those, those are the types of things, uh, that, that make me really like this breakout, but I understand that I'm not always...
Sorry. I just, I just want to clarify, I wasn't against the breakout. I just want to make sure that, that people are not having this mis, because I hear this out in the public, that there's this misconception that certain children are sent to special ed programs, that that's not necessarily accurate always by, um, you know, that, that anybody can just qualify for something, that, that there are qualifications around it and we are trying to help the students that need help.
I, I'm, I need to interject here. This is a great conversation, obviously a lot of passion for this subject, but I want to be mindful for the presentations that are coming at our study session that happens after this meeting. So I love it, I love the conversation, um, and we can continue this if it's individually or as a group, but I think from where we are now, we need to just kind of move on. So if, if I can just say that and, and Jim, I'll give you 38 seconds.
Fine. This, this kind of reminded me of the boundary issues that we had before from a historical perspective. Anyhow, this chart talks about vision cards and the categories. Some of these categories were 70% at the top, 80% at the top, or 90% at the top. Now, are those arbitrary ones or is that our desire to have all of those? Shouldn't that level four be 90% all the way across at every one of those? Or is this just still in the early stages where we did identify 50%, 60%, 70% in some of those categories? Who wants to take that one?
Yeah, I guess that's for me, Director Sorum. I looked at the, um, the levels of success in terms of national norms, in terms of what the state had set as a criteria. So the state has set 90% as a criteria for graduation, so I set that as our vision. I didn't want to set the vision out of reach so we'd never see success. So I, I've been one that never wanted 100% across the line. So I tried to differentiate it based on the indicator. 90% was a great, uh, vision for the old kindergarten readiness, which basically involved alphabetic principle, knowing your letters. 90% right now would be a, quite a stretch now that we've, uh, increased, so I think I set an 80% there. But yeah, I, I'm open to suggestions for raising or lowering criteria. It's not a science as much as it is, as, you know, I would like. There are too many standards out there in the literature. But I think these are still ambitious goals, but are reachable, smart goals. And some of the goals you hear politicians especially aspire to are not theoretically possible.
All right. It just is interesting because as vision cards are from our strategic directions and all the measurements that we've had in the past on our various, um, goals and, and vision cards, you know, that, that we have these established and be, be somewhat realistic. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for, for putting this all together, David. I'll have to remember next time there's a laser pointer in your hand, I'll wear my welding goggles.
Yeah, I try not to hit you.
That's all right. If I'm squinting like this, you'll know you got me. All right, thank you so kindly for this, for putting this together. Let's see, next up is, um, number five is a policy review. We're looking for a second reading of revised policy 726, consultant services. Don.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the second reading of the revised policy 726, consultant services. Second.
All right. Rod, what have you got for us?
Again, this was a policy that was brought to the board back on November 10th for its first reading. It was a policy that was written, um, that was brought to the board back in June. We did some modifications to bring it more up to clarity, um, in regards to third-party vendors within the district.
Okay, any, um, questions, comments? Seems pretty straightforward. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thanks, Rod. Uh, next one up is the first reading of revised policy 430, student teachers. I'd like to read this one. Rick.
Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of revised policy 430, student teachers.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Tim, what have you got for us?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent, School Board members, cabinet, those in attendance. The updated revisions in policy 430, as you see them, do not mark a substantial departure from the policy that has a record of effectiveness in Bloomington Public Schools. Some of the specific, um, examples of minor updates are notated for you. Things related to, um, the contact person, language from curriculum instruction to learning and teaching, which represents an update in our department structure and name. The limit on the number of weeks a teacher can supervise a student teacher raised from 14 to 16 to reflect the arrangement we have with some of our partner universities like Mankato State. Section L updates our practices related to processing fees incurred as part of the, the student teaching requirements. And, um, the piece that, uh, survived since 2003, that we continue to endeavor to have a policy to, um, give our staff access to professional development, to situate them for a successful hosting experience. All those things are updated in language or highlighted or emphasized according to practices, current practices or practices we, uh, hope to see continue moving forward. And since this packet went to you, I've, um, gotten some important feedback on, um, uh, information related to school psychologists. Joe Mavison, who happens to be attending tonight, helped provide some of that feedback. So that'll be incorporated into any language for the second reading. And I've also become aware of a nuance that I'll point out in, um, Part G, which states that only teachers who have attained tenure in the district will be considered to supervise student teachers. And what I've become aware of is that as we are not sitting in the first class exemplars are St. Paul, Minneapolis, Duluth, our teachers are not tenured as such, so the term is inaccurate. Rather, in Bloomington, teachers attain continuing contract status per the statute 122A dot 40 versus 122A dot 41. So, uh, that will be cleaned up for the second reading as well.
All right, well, I've circled it just to make sure that we can, I'll know if it's changed or not. Any questions, comments?
Just one, one quick one. So it says that it's changing the limit of number of weeks a teacher can supervise a student teacher with rates from 14 to 16 weeks? Is that what we're currently doing, so we changed it or is that what you recommend?
Partly the reason for the update is due to our co-teaching, um, model that we have with particular universities. There's a longer time that student teachers are with host teachers. And so we just wanted to make sure policy and language allowed for that.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Jim?
I just want to comment on, on, uh, how much we appreciate the administration going through our policies so that we can do what this was last done in 2000. And now it's 14 years later, so I guess there would be cause for some language changes and other things like that too. So once again, our administration is working hard to keep us current.
And I appreciate the opportunity the superintendent afforded me to review this particular policy.
I'm sure that's the way it was phrased when he brought it to you.
Verbatim.
All right. Any other questions before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
My thanks.
All right, now we are on number six here, which is the, we're calling this the School Board Self-Assessment. This is the second of, of two we did, one of these in June, I believe it was, in our June agenda. And it's just an opportunity to, for me to ask publicly, how do we think we're doing? How do you think you're doing as board members? Are you getting what you need? This last election cycle put three brand-new board members on our, on our board, excuse me, and we have one returning. We needed that historical perspective. But, um, this, this is a part of an ongoing conversation, um, that I have with each board member individually and certainly, um, cabinet members. How, how do you feel we're progressing? This can be, everybody gives a thumbs up or you have an opportunity to, to share some information. I'd, I'd rather hear it, um, before the end of the year and, and not have a big bucket dumped on my desk and say, fix all these things. So if, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but, um, it's just an opportunity to share, uh, as it was in, in June, how are we doing? Overall, I think we're doing very well. We've made some, some, um, large accomplishments this year. Tom.
I would say these last six months have been a lot easier for me personally than the first six months. I think that, uh, you know, on-the-job training progressing a lot. I think, you know, whenever I have questions, you or another board member or Mr. Superintendent always makes themselves available and I can get the answers and I, when I pose a question, it's not, you know, two weeks later, it's taken care of, you know, usually by the end of the day, which, which I appreciate. So I think, you know, for me, it's going well, learning and continuing to grow, and I'm hoping.
It's too bad there isn't a, a real big thick manual for brand-new board members that say, here's what you're going to do every day for the first six months.
That we could have said before we said the word.
Exactly.
You're right. It's a church.
Okay, but like I say, I don't want to force the, the conversation, but we do, this, this would allow for a, somewhat of a segue into our, um, uh, School Board Self-Evaluation. We're looking at, um, myself, the superintendent, Maureen, going to try and get together and flesh out a document that maybe we can present to the board, we will present to the board, but that, that we might be able to use going forward. And this is in reference to our last professional development, which was this last Wednesday, last, last Wednesday, where our facilitator mentioned that something like this can be used and has been used and would be helpful. So, um, Maureen and myself and the superintendent are going to try and flesh something out. Yeah, Nellie?
I just wanted to say that I do appreciate the opportunities of, um, professional development opportunities that we have outside of the, of the, of this table. You know, I do appreciate the board development meetings. Those are, those are important, those are enriching, but I think it's really definitely important to continue to find, uh, ways for us to know more about what's happening outside of Bloomington and even outside of Minnesota. It gives us a different perspective too, and it's helpful and it's enriching, and I hope that we can have those kind of opportunities coming, um, more opportunities coming in the future for all of us.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll make the same offer that I did in June. I'll, I'll make the same offer that I did in June. You, you don't have to, you don't have to tell me everything tonight, you can grab me in the hallway, call me up, send an email, what about this, what about that? And I think everybody has done that over the last 11 months, and certainly for Cabinet. I'm interested in your opinion on how you think we're doing and, and if there's any tweaks that, that you think we could, we would benefit from. You can tell me directly, or you can funnel that through the Superintendent, and he'll grab me and, and we'll have a conversation. So. All right, that's, that's really all I have for that. Now, next up, we have Board Member Reports. This is an opportunity for each board member to share what they've been up to since our last meeting. It can, it certainly would include committee assignments, but then also an opportunity to celebrate what, what they've been involved in through our different schools in the district and, and the individual happenings that they've come across and feel that they want to share. So does anybody want to share anything? I know I have my list, but I'll save that to the end. Rick?
I have two things that I want to mention. I sent out an email today, so sorry, it was so last minute, but two things, Pathways Advisory Committee, some feedback I want on that, and also the Youth Advisory Committee. I had promised that I would take the feedback that we had received from the students and sort of consolidate the notes that we, we had from that, and then sort of present it to the board and administration just for consideration. My hope is that we would take some of these and, and possibly create some action items out of them, or an action item out of it, so that way the students felt like their voice was really heard and that what they said actually created action in the, in the district. And so I sent that out. I don't know if we need any more feedback or discussion on the document, or what the next step should be, if anyone has suggestions. I'd say if, if, if people wanted to add anything to what I had already sent, they could send me those comments, and then at our next meeting, I could have a form, I don't know if we needed to have it in a PowerPoint presentation or what the, the official rules of engagement state. But then we could present that to the administration as, what was, I forget what Cheese Brown's term was, soft.
Self-skills?
Not, not soft skills, it was giving, giving advice, soft advice. Oh, here's, here's our opinion. So would that be helpful, or did everyone actually have a chance to look at this document and then we can, no, okay. So I sent out a document, the bullet points from the day. If, there's other things that you remember from the day that you feel are important, go ahead and send those to me. And then perhaps then at our next board meeting, we can finalize it, everyone gives a thumbs up, whether or not they think this is appropriate, and then we can head to the administration and say, okay, what are you going to do about it, right? Also, the youth, or the Pathways, what was the District Curriculum Advisory Committee, now the Pathways Advisory Committee, at our last meeting, was looking for specific direction, or wondering if they would be receiving, now that they have a name change, specific direction from the board as to things that they should be focused on. I sent out that document, it's shorter, so I can read through just what I had, some of the suggestions. I also sent it to our very own Dr. Anderson. He said it looks good to him. But just based on the conversations that we had in, in our professional development and around the board table, what I came up with was, while giving input into the curriculum development process, the PAC shall consider the following. So they have curriculum to consider. How does this affect student achievement? How is this in line with the district's strategic plan and, and mission? How does it align with the district's pathways to graduation initiatives? And I list the five, getting students ready for K, reading proficiency at third grade, improving graduation rates, preparing students for college and career after high school, closing achievement gaps. And then I said, feedback from stakeholder meetings, which shall, or which will be passed along by the Executive Director of Learning and Teaching. So those were just some of the ideas that we had, had talked about, and being the board liaison to that committee, thought it would be helpful to pass along some of those ideas. Was there anything else? Quick, and it's, it's definitely a fluid document, it's not something that has to be set in stone. I think I especially left that open. For instance, the students, I, I won't say their names, but there were some that said, we think that the curriculum should be more rigorous, right? They said, okay, so I'm going to tell everybody that it's more difficult now because of you, and they didn't like that, so I withhold names.
I was there, I heard them.
Yeah. So are these, do these things make sense? Is there anything else that should be added to that?
Anyone want to add anything to this, to these notes?
I just had a question, now that being that it's PAC, they were going to meet prior to next Monday, prior to the seven o'clock meeting?
We actually going to meet after the meeting?
Yeah, after, and then they meet quarterly, right?
Yes.
So, and besides the curriculum thing, they're going to be watching the Pathways to Graduation, vision cards and all that sort of stuff, so that's an additional, what, responsibility or just discussion for the thing going on? So that we do have an advisory group that's watching the Pathways to Graduation, vision cards, I guess? Is that, would that be their role? Or it would be TBD?
TBD is something. We'll look at curriculum instruction assessment through the lens of the World's Best Workforce. We'll be looking at the elements of the milestones through that lens.
I mean, that would be always helpful, rather than have, coming back with some suggestions or admissions to the board, rather than have the board go through all of that stuff every so often.
Mr. Chair. I appreciate your taking up the notes from the Youth Advisory, and I do hope they will end up getting passed along to the Cabinet that they're pertinent to, because some of those comments were very interesting, you know, and should be thought about. You know, maybe they just didn't think of it in that, in that manner that the, the students do, so, thank you.
Yeah, it'd be nice for the students to know that they're actually being heard and...
Yeah, I think that, that's the key to, to really having them be involved and stay involved. And, you know, I've said it before, like, a lot of times we talk about community involvement, but really, the, the baker down the street is not taking the test, right? And so the person that we need to make sure is involved is the student. And if we can make sure the students are, and the community can help in that effort. But I feel if they come to an advisory committee to the board, and the board just treats them like they're kids, that their opinion doesn't matter, that's going to be a really easy way to turn students off from this whole process, and to have them not be involved or engaged. And so, yeah, I really, really feel passionately about this effort.
Sure, well, if you put the suggestion box out, you, you better at least read the suggestions. Okay. Anyone have anything else, Don?
Well, I have quite a long list of things, but since we're so short on time, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. I attended the, I'm the committee rep to the Special Ed Community Advisory Council, and I attended that meeting, and the topic there was, there's going to be some, I guess you could say reorganization within the Student Services offices, and that's what Director Melby went over with all of us and kind of started the conversation around some of the changes that will be coming there. And then I attended the Family Stars graduation, and I just thought a really great thing about that is every single graduate got up and said something, and I think I heard every one of them say, thank you so much for having this program, this has been really great, I'm so glad that you offered this for me to take. And one young, one, one man even said, this has inspired me so much, I'm going back to school myself. So I thought that was a really great thing for the graduation.
Jim?
Sure, I should mention, I went to the TIES annual meeting, and just to get it on the record, TIES is, you know, our main server organization that we deal with, and they have a new interim director now, they've had, the organization's gone through some changes and, and had some, some issues and so forth, so now they're, they're on the road to a, a better path. But as recently, and I know a lot of districts were commenting about the downtime that they were having with the TIES servers, and so they, they pledged to do more to help alleviate some of those problems, but it is a, an organization that's in some transition now, and so we just want to hope them the best and, and work with them to get through some of the problems that they're having.
All right, thank you. Anyone else before I tackle this list, I'll, I'll try and make it sure. All right, I had the opportunity to, along with Don, attend the Family Stars graduation. It was, it was a lot of fun, it was right here in, in the boardroom, and we were able to share a meal afterwards with, with the families, and, and Don is right, the young man that got up and mentioned that he was so inspired that he went back to school himself, that was rather touching. Managed to make it to five different schools for the flag-raising ceremonies, different ones than I went to last year. I appreciate the, the district giving enough time if someone feels so inclined to get to one school and next school and the next school. Attended the movie night over at Pond Center for the Parent Advisory Council, it was a movie called Planes Two or something, something like, anyways, it's a sequel to a sequel to a sequel to Cars, and the kids were loving it. We did have a professional development session here last Wednesday, that was the fourth of six that we have planned. Was fortunate to be able to serve breakfast over at Ridgeview Elementary for the family breakfast. If I remember the number right, I was told there were 500 people that came through there. And so that's a wonderful time, it's, I think it starts at seven, it goes to nine, is that close, right? Great time over there. Made it over to the spaghetti dinner fundraiser for the Kennedy Show Choir, Rhythm, Rhythm in Gold, I think is what that one is, is called. And then made it to an Olson Elementary White Tiger Rally, that was at 2:15 on Friday, last Friday. And among other things, they gave out an award for the best behaved bus. So I assume that, that the bus driver had some input into that particular award, and the kids were all jazzed and they were high-fiving everyone because they got the best behaved bus. So there were also additional awards that they gave out at the White Tiger Rally, and another one was when they, essentially they catch the students exhibiting good behavior, or behavior that they're trying to, to teach at, at Olson Elementary, and they give a little tag, and it's, one of the, one of the things that they can win is a day in the, in the principal's chair. And what I believe happens is Mr. Meyer actually gives that student his chair. So they sit in an adult-sized chair and they have it the whole day. They have to promise not to spin around, but it's a, it was, it's a lot of fun to see these, these rallies and see how energized the schools and the student and the staff are. That, that concludes my reports. Superintendent?
Thank you. The board will be having a Pathways to Graduation public meeting on December 1st at 7:00 p.m. here at the Arlene Bush Boardroom. Two main topics, the first will be 13, 14, highlights and review of the school's performance that was featured in the annual report that the public received earlier this month, in the school page document, school pages document. The second thing that's going to be covered would be the vision and about the pathways to graduation. Next topic is, the School Board and the Bloomington City Council will be having a joint meeting on December 10th at 7:00 p.m. at City Hall, and the topic will be student enrollment projections. That concludes my report.
That'll be an interesting conversation. All right, move to the other part of the agenda, does anyone have anything that... All right, then we're, we're just looking for that elusive motion to adjourn.
I'll move, second.
All right, we'll call this meeting adjourned. And we're, we're going to transition into a study session, I'll give you six minutes to stretch your, your legs and get a drink of water and...